Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen and Water Commissioners Meeting. Mr. Clark, would you read the agenda items, please?
After the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll have open forum and appointments of the Board of Selectmen acting as Water Commissioners for an abatement for our water bill. Then we'll be having a public hearing for renewal of the cable television license with Comcast Cable, and then we will go into some action items.
Great. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, for open forum, our fire chief is here. We're gonna let him speak first tonight. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. I just want to give you a brief update on the storm we had on Halloween night, on November 1st. That was a pretty significant wind event. There was two areas of town that were affected, mainly it was from, pretty much from the center of town, out to Washington Street down central, and I should say, Central Street to Washington, up Plymouth, that whole, like, area, about thirteen hundred residents. I believe it was caused by a tree that came down somewhere in the vicinity of the neck of the woods.
Yes.
Which opened up a switch.
Friend of my father-in-law's.
Which opened up a switch on Spring Street, which cut power to thirteen hundred customers. When I was coming in that morning, National Grid was already there, working on it, and they resolved that fairly quickly after the winds died down. They won't go up if it's more than thirty-five miles per hour gusts, just for their safety. I also logged on to National Grid's outage map and found there's a couple of spots in town that didn't have power. I went and I checked on those and, you know, called the municipal storm room, just to let them know what I found or whatever. But there was one neighborhood in particular, which was Cider Mill Lane, David Lane, Browns Lane, I've always offered that, that the one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-volt transmission line owned by Eversource came down in the air of twenty-seven Cider Mill Lane. A tree had fallen on that wire, and it actually brought it down on top of an eight-thousand-volt primary wire. It blew the fuse at Cider Mill and Pine Street and pretty much blew apart two transformers as well. I located that, I don't know what time of the morning, nine, nine-thirty in the morning, called it in, and at about three o'clock in the afternoon, I got a call from National Grid saying, hey, we have a problem because that was one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-volts that it went through that neighborhood where there was about twenty-seven homes. They were very concerned that damage had occurred inside homes without anyone knowing about it. And this was kind of unprecedented for us, and it was kind of unprecedented for them, whereas we would actually have such a large transmission line come down in contact in electrical grid. It doesn't happen often. And I didn't know it was one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-volts until I got back there at about three o'clock. So, long story short, they had to pull the meters off of twenty-seven homes. The wiring inspector had met me down there, we were there for about two hours, formulated a plan where it's really, it's not the town of East Bridgewater's responsibility at all. It really has nothing to do with the town of East Bridgewater, other than the fact that, once National Grid deemed that those houses might not be safe, they had to pull the meters. And they had to be inspected by a licensed electrician. And in order for that house to be re-energized, our wiring inspector had to sign off in it that a licensed electrician arrived there and said it was okay or not. It's not his job to go in and inspect houses himself, which is kind of what National Grid wanted, and we squashed that right away. And so, National Grid did send down a team of people from their Brockton office, and they went door-to-door, explained it. Everything really kind of went smoothly, there was a couple of neighbors down there, it was a tight-knit community, they banded together, and they got a few electricians to come down and pretty much get every house done that night, with the exception of two. So, on Saturday morning, all but two were re-energized. They did find some problems in some dwellings where, like a GFIOL that might have fried or something like that, where they were able to isolate that but get power back to the houses. The two that weren't able to be re-energized, they were out of town. So, as far as I know today, I believe everyone's up and running again now, unless they still are out of town, and then they're not, but they have...
Still two.
There's still two, so they're still probably on vacation, not even knowing. But it went really well. I want to applaud the wiring inspector for taking a lot of time out of his Friday evening, Friday night, dealing with that and the pitch black with a, you know, a bunch of, I wouldn't say unhappy homeowners, because I didn't really find anyone that was really, you know, over the top unhappy about it. But, you know, job well done by you.
That's great, yeah. I talked to a resident down there who said, you know, we understand and we appreciate what the town is doing, and they did all kind of band together, so that's nice to see that, but thank you for...
Yeah, it's very unprecedented, because I drove through the neighborhood, and I know power only comes in off Pine Street, and I came in off Washington, I drove the whole neighborhood, and I'm like, I don't see any damage. So, I happened to, I noticed that the fuse had blown on Pine Street, so when I turned around and started driving back up, I just happened to notice a line that was not normal. And it was the primary down, the transmission line down. So, when I get out and looked at it, and Eversource happened to arrive right then and there, he's like, oh, we found it! So, they had been looking for it, too. But one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-volts, that's a lot of electricity.
Yeah, it is.
And the residents there, they said they heard two loud booms. And what that was, when you had, the first boom was when it hit, second boom was when the relay site, wherever that was off-site, shut power off. It'll send power again to see if it cleared, and it didn't, so you had another boom. And then it just went dead, so that's pretty much what happened.
Thank you. Mr. Noble, would you like to add to that, please?
I just want to compliment the chief for his proactivity in this matter and keeping us informed of what was going on and making sure the town didn't expose itself to any liability that it shouldn't. And I do, I have to tell you, that was above and beyond the call of duty, and his finding that error and working with National Grid to resolve it for the residents was fantastic, and I give him my highest compliments, right on top of it.
Well, that was great. And you came back, too, and, you know, you were here and let us know, so I think everybody...
Yeah, I spoke to him right away, because it was one of those, this is just way outside of parks, you know? You know, it's either him or I was gonna call Town Council, I believe he put Town Council on standby.
He's cheaper.
Right.
We have to pay him anyway.
For the people that didn't have power, it didn't work out for them until, you know, later in that evening, but, I mean, from the town side, making sure everyone was safe, it worked out really well, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good case of everybody working together. Thank you, Chief, for letting us know.
You're welcome.
I'm assuming Superintendent Legault that you're also here for open forum?
I am.
Come sit at our table.
Thank you. I want to thank you for letting me come in tonight and not be on the official docket, but to come and just talk to you and the community about an incident that happened over the weekend. And if I may take a moment just to read the letter that I wrote to the community, to my students, to their parents. And I think that this is an opportunity for me to come to the community, come to the leaders of the town of East Bridgewater, and for this letter to be read to everyone, to understand where we're coming from as a school district, but more as a community, and to just discuss a little bit of what we're going to do moving forward. Dear community members, the East Bridgewater Public School District is aware of a video that appears to portray several East Bridgewater students engaging in unacceptable behavior outside of school grounds. The district does not condone the statements or actions of the individuals portrayed in that video. Such statements and actions are against the core values of our district and our community. The district is in the process of undertaking investigation into the misconduct. Building Administration will be meeting with our students on Monday morning to continue the conversation about the importance of respect, appreciating the difference in others, and our responsibility as digital citizens. The district will have social workers and guidance counselors available to all students. The district has, continues to reach out to the appropriate individuals and groups who will come to our district to speak with our students regarding respect. The East Bridgewater Public School District, along with the community, will face this challenge with respect and dignity for all. We are not born being prejudiced. We need community, our community, the town of East Bridgewater, to recognize and work together to try to understand different cultures, and that we're all in a public school, in a public community, and we all need to get along. I'm asking for patience and understanding from everyone, because they are still kids. They're our kids. We need to educate them together, we need to discuss this as a community, and move forward. It takes time to educate. I'm asking to embrace the differences. You don't have to like the differences, but we must embrace each other as a community so that we can grow. This is not a one and a done. We will continue to communicate with our kids, with our parents, and with the community. But I cannot do it alone, nor can my administration, nor can my teachers, and nor can our students. I do believe that the action that we will take will be using, working with our students to tell us what they need to hear from us, how they want us to move forward as a school community and as a town. And all I'm asking today, and thank you for giving me this time, is that you allow the schools, allow the administration to complete the investigation, allow us to talk to the students, and allow the students to engage in conversation that is hard, but will be gratifying in the long run. We're not gonna change it overnight, we're not gonna change it next week. I looked at it today, and I said, I cannot believe we're still talking about these types of issues. We have so many veterans in this town, we have people that have gone through recession, we have people who've gone through the fifties, we have people who have gone to war, and we still continue to do things like this. And look at differences as bad, or funny, or okay to bully. Well, it's not. We're not condoning it, but we want to change it without raising our voices, without raising our fists, but being smart, educated, and well-balanced young individuals. And I want the kids to be able to do this on their own, with the help of the adults, because they didn't learn this. Or they've learned this, they were not born like this. So, we need to teach them, it's okay. So, thank you for this evening. I do want to thank the East Bridgewater Police Department for supporting us. This is not a criminal activity, but they are there, and they have been there for support. Chief Allen is a tremendous resource for us, and the school resource officers are helping the kids. We certainly don't want any issues, and we don't want anybody to get upset and to get angry and use anything that is out of anger. We need to be educated, talk about this, be patient, because they're kids. We'll get through it, but we need the community's help, and that's why I'm here this evening. And I thought that it would be an appropriate place to ask for some support, and that parents know that this isn't Ida Gatcha, and it's not a one and done. We have pre-kindergartners all the way up to seniors that are going off to college. This is a blueprint. When you use social media to send a message, whatever that message is, it's going to be a blueprint of who you are. And we just need to remember those things.
Thank you, thank you for coming in and letting us know what's, you know, the administration's response is to this.
I think we, if we haven't, we're going to get that letter on the town website by tomorrow.
We're gonna set it up in the morning.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything we can do, let us know.
Thank you.
Is anybody else here for open forum? No? Okay. Well, then, we will go to our scheduled action item as Water Commissioners. We have a request for an abatement on a water bill. I would invite the interested parties to come up. If you could just state your name and address. Should we have John and Jason? John and Jason, if you want to come up as well, you can do that. Thank you. Hi.
Lisa Donahue, 544 Central Street.
If you want to just explain, you know, why you're asking for an abatement, I think is...
I've only been in the town for four years, come December. In July, when I opened my water bill, I got quite a shock. I had a thirteen-hundred-dollar water bill, and there's three people in my home, and we all work full-time. My daughter works three jobs, nobody's ever home, I don't have a swimming pool, my lawn was burnt, just like everybody else's. So, I tell you, something had to have been wrong. So, I called the water department, and the next day, they sent two gentlemen over to look at my water meter, and they stood there for twenty minutes. The numbers never moved. So, they had to go back, you know, and talk things over and stuff, and I told them, I said, something's wrong. I don't use this water. They told me I used one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand gallons of water between December and June tenth. Now, it's just not possible, that's ten full-size swimming pools. I don't use that much water. So, they ended up, and it's a new meter, I've only had one reading on that meter, and that bill was like three-hundred and some-odd dollars back in December. So, they said that they were gonna come and take the meter out. I talked to the, Jason?
That's, that's Jason. There you go.
And they came and they took my meter out, sent it for testing, and then I was notified that the test came back saying that the meter was working fine, and that it, I don't know if, do you have a copy of the test?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Showed that there was some intermittent leaks. Intermittent leak is a couple gallons a week, from what I understand from a plumber, and that definitely would not add up to one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand gallons. I had all my toilets checked, no leaks. I talked to, I have a cesspool, I talked to the people in Bridgewater that pump it, they said, if you had a leak, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand gallons, we would have been out here pumping, and you would have had a sinkhole in your backyard. And another thing, too, is when Jason sent me all of these tests, they're after the billing period, so these don't show anything. They don't have any tests at all during that billing period. So, I have been, since they put the meter back in, almost three weeks ago, I had them show me, the gentleman showed me how to read the numbers, and they, again, they put it back in, they stood there for fifteen minutes, the numbers didn't move. It jumped from nine forty-seven to one oh seven or something, when they put it in, for some reason, but that's fine. And it's showing here that, maybe you can help me with how these numbers work, because I took two readings, about a week and a half apart, and it's thirty-five point one-five-three for one week, and then for the other one, again, it was like thirty-three point something. If I figure that over a six-month period for my bill, then it's like three thousand five-hundred and something, not the eighteen-thousand-whatever that I was charged for. So, nobody has been able to prove to me, I've had plumbers come out, I have no leaks. Again, like I said, I didn't fill a swimming pool, my lawn's burnt, and nobody's ever home. So, I really, I mean, I did pay it, because I got a pink slip saying a lien was going on my property, so I did pay the bill. But I really would appreciate it if this could be looked at, and anybody that I talked to, I mean, even the gentleman that came, and even Jason himself, said that he'd fight it, too.
Okay. Do you guys want to...
Yeah. At this point, all we can do is have the meter checked. All we can do is have it tested. That's what we go on. The smart meter's what we have. They're very intelligent, and we can actually go back only ninety days to see if it's actually, if it's leaking, if there is a leak. So, when we got the meter, we couldn't go back into the billing period. So, we found an intermittent leak of the ninety days that we had the meter. So, we could only go back into July, whereas I think your billing period...
And the billing period was like January?
Yeah, it was, it was December to June.
June tenth.
Okay.
So, we could go back into July, and we noticed that there was an intermittent leak at that time. We had the meter tested, it came back, it passed, and that's what we have. So, there are, these meters are gonna pick up the slightest amount of water that goes through them, the new meters that we're putting in town. We had one, we have one account right now that has used two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand gallons of water in three weeks. We went there, they have a leak, and they had to shut it off, they have to get a plumber to stop this, because that's a large bill. So, they used thirty thousand cubic feet, which is, you know, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand gallons of water in three weeks, so...
But now, how did you find out about that leak? Did, was, did they...
It was a whole investigation of...
I mean, you're not tracking, so you don't know when one suddenly starts using a lot.
No, there was somebody up there that was looking, going, you know, we see a little water that's coming out of the ground here, but why? And two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand gallons over three weeks is quite a bit of water going into the ground. That's, that's a lot.
Right.
Typically, the way the system's set up at this point, the meters are read, each of your residential meters are read biannually, semi-annually, six-month period, so there's six months that go by before we are able to identify a large water reading, you know, a usage/consumption that's unusual. When that goes, when that reading comes back in, the system will typically, you know, flag that and say, you know, this is an unusual reading. And that's how these investigations will typically happen, usually driven by the resident, the resident calls, because they've received, you know, an abnormal bill or an unusual bill. The process is, has been, and had, I don't know, fifteen years I've been involved with it, is very typical. One of the department employees will respond, will set up an appointment, they'll go in, they'll observe the meter to, or to point, will observe it, look for, you know, low flow, no flow, make sure everything's set up in the house. Sometimes you can identify the leak right there, other times you can't. We'll typically offer the option to have that meter taken out and tested. In my experience, a meter never records more water than has gone through it, it always slows, so it will always identify, it will never account for water that didn't go through the meter. Having been through this, you know, probably, this is probably our fifth case in the, you know, five, fifteen years that I've been involved now with the water department, of having to come before. It's very, very difficult, and I do feel for the residents, I understand their position, but our entire, not only ours, every municipal water system bases their operations off what flows through the meter, just like the electric company. I don't have, none of us, I don't think there's anyone that can identify where that water flowed through, except that that water flowed through the meter. The meters are calibrated when they come out of the factory, so, you know, they all start at the same point. We've had over, now over three thousand of these meters be installed. We've not run into any similar issues with those new meters, as far as, you know, abnormalities in the new meters that have installed, or, you know, they're electromagnetic meter now, so they don't, again, the older meters that were installed were actually gear-driven. Over time, the gears would slip, and you'd actually have unaccounted for water, more water would flow through than not. But, again, these, these abnormal readings and usages do occur, and I can appreciate your, you know, point that you've had the plumbers in and looked at things. But I think, again, all we can base it on is that that water flowed through the, was used, consumed somewhere in the home after it went through the meter. You know, if it was a leak outside before, it wouldn't have ever flown through the meter. So, it had to be demanded inside the house, to some extent or another, for that water to flow and to be accumulated and recorded on the meter.
Okay.
If I may as well?
Sure.
The plumber also said that that time of year, especially from December through April this past year, if I had any sort of a leak like that, my pipes would have burst, because that's an extreme amount of water. I also, when the weather started turning nice, I had to call in the wildlife people, because I had some little critters down in my dirt basement, and they put thirty-five traps all underneath my house, and they did not tell me that there was any moisture or anything. I called them and asked them, is that something they would have told me if they saw some moisture? So, they said that, you know, I mean, for it being an almost three-hundred-year-old home with a house with the cracks in the foundation and everything, that it was, it was pretty dry. So, I mean, there's no signs at all anywhere, and like I said, they told me if it was coming from my toilets or anything, then I only have a fifteen-thousand-dollar tank, I would have had to have had them come and pump, or I would have had major damage out in my backyard. So, and, and the other thing, too, I mean, if they could give me testing, showing me or something, showing even without a doubt to me, then fine, I'd let it go. But testing after the bill, that doesn't do anything, and I've got professionals and even their own guys that have told me, this, something's not right here. You, you don't have a leak, it's not, your meter's not moving. So, they did it with the water running in the house, and then they did it with no water running in the house, twice they did it. And then, when Jason had called me and told me that, you know, we gotta get the meter back in the house, I said, I don't want that meter, I'm not convinced that this, I mean, no electronic piece of equipment is one-hundred percent foolproof. So, while they haven't come across this before, they're not proving to me that something wasn't wrong with my meter. So, I had asked for a different meter. Can I just see a meter set in my house at zero, and I can keep an eye on it? Oh, we'll charge you three-hundred-and-twenty dollars for that. And I was, that's when I really decided I was, I was coming, because something's not right. And I've had all the professionals that I need in to tell me there's no problems in my house. And like I said, I've been watching the readings, and I'm gonna continue to watch them, and the path that I'm on right now, since that meter was put back in, goes to add up to what my bill was in December.
You have anything more?
No. The meter will only record if water goes through it. That's what it's there for. That's, it's, it's, if water goes through it, the meter will record, and if you're watching it now, you'll, you should see that. So, somewhere along the line, it went through. Every meter that they put in, into a home, has to be activated. So, how they activate the meter is they shine a flashlight above it, and it activates the meter, or water will go through it. What we do is we activate it, so we shine a flashlight above it, and the guys make sure that there, it's all zeros, that it's all zeroed out from the factory. From the factory, I think there's, I want to say maybe a hundred gallons that are on it. Probably about a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty gallons, that's because they test it when the meter is, before it ships. So, every meter from the factory is tested before it ships, that's, so it shows very minor water usage on it. So, they all shine the flashlight, activate it, zeros, and that's when they turn the water on. So...
Anything more, John?
Well, we'll take it under advisement. I mean, I, I'm not a plumber, obviously, and I'm not a water expert. I will say that we had a problem in our house a few years ago, where we had a toilet that was filling constantly. You don't want to know how many times I told my husband to get the plumber in to get it fixed, and he ignored me, and he's sitting behind you, turning beet red right now. But when we got our water bill, after that six months, my bill was up three-hundred dollars more than normal, and it was from that one, and I knew that's what it was the minute the bill came, you know? So, I would say, you know...
They were in the toilets, too?
Well, I was, too, but it was a leak, it was a problem in the mechanism. And like I said, I'm not a plumber, and I'm not trying to give you plumbing advice, I'm just, in a personal experience, I had something not that extreme happen, and it was because there was a leak in my, in the toilet mechanism, so...
And, and we understand that this can be a problem and an issue. So, what we're trying to do is get the meters in so we can read them once a month. The beginning of every month, we want to have somebody going out to read the whole town. To read the whole town is only gonna... once we get the majority of the meters in, it's... You can say four... four to six hours to read the whole town. So, we're working on doing that, so if we do have any red flags that come up, we can immediately tell the homeowner that something's going on, that... that there is a problem inside the house, so this doesn't happen, because we don't like... we don't like this either.
Right, right. And it's tough when it's a bill that's from six months prior, and, you know, and you can't go back, like you said, to get that information.
So, we are... we are trying to, you know, work... work this out for everyone, so that everybody...
Is there anything in place that in the future will be able to go back six months?
So, with this new meter-reading system, I... We'll be able to read the meter right from outside the house.
Still records 90 days, though.
Yeah, it will...
Has the capability to record 90 days, not 180.
Yeah. So, if, let's say we read it once a... once a month, and there is an issue there, and they say, "Something's going on, what is it?" We can go back there, and we can actually log into that computer. We can only read 90 days. But at the end of six months, when we go out and read them now, we can only read three months prior. We can't read that whole six months, so we're trying to... we're trying... we'd like to read them, and that is in our... our plan, at the end of this year, to... to purchase some equipment to read these meters once a month.
Okay.
So, relatively, it's another significant undertaking, though, because it's a reformulating the whole billing structure collection. It's a, you know, it's a... it'll be another future discussion.
But we know what that means.
Well, it's a utility, and, you know, for a long time, people don't think of your water as the same as they think of your electricity in your house, but it, you know, it's a resource that we manage, that we manage, and it needs to be recognized as a, you know, an actual utility that is provided.
Okay. Any good to add?
Prior to you getting that $1,300 bill, since January, there was no plumbing at all, no plumber visited the house or anything like that?
No, no issues.
All right, take it under advisement.
We will, we're not gonna make a decision right now, but we will take it under advisement.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys, for sharing your expertise on this. We have a packed house, our Nielsen ratings are gonna go up. All right, at this point, I will take a motion to close...
Motion to close our Board of Water Commissioners meeting.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the Board of Selectmen's meeting stays open, and we will move on to our public hearing.
Right on schedule.
Right on schedule.
The Town of East Bridgewater Board of Selectmen, notice of a public hearing regarding the renewal of cable television license of Comcast Cable Communication Management, LLC. November 4th, 2019, at East Bridgewater Town Hall, 175 Central Street, First Floor Conference Room. The Town of East Bridgewater Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on November 4th, 2019, at 6:30 at the 175 Central Street, First Floor Conference Room pursuant to Chapter 207, Code of Massachusetts Regulation 3.05. In any applicable cable television renewal license laws, regulations, or requirements regarding the renewal of the cable television license of Comcast Cable Communication Management, LLC. Any applications, reports, statements, and/or amendments in the possession of the town to be considered at the hearing shall be available upon completion for a public inspection and reproduction at a reasonable fee at the Board of Selectmen's office, 175 Central Street during regular Town Hall hours, with the Selectmen Town of East Bridgewater.
Thank you very much. I see our town council is here, and I also see the chairman of EB Cam. I think, would maybe you two like to both come up to the table, and we'll have you go first, and then if other people wanna speak about this, then we'll just call on people as we go through. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I can just do a brief intro into kind of the background, and then if Steve can kinda... So, good evening, Chris Kenny, Clifford Kenny, Town Council for Town East Bridgewater. So, as Mr. Shidi read, this is on for a public hearing on the proposal that Comcast presented for a cable license renewal. And you, as the Board of Selectmen, are the issuing authority which grants the renewal license to Comcast. The current renewal license was issued on January 28th, 2010, and that was for 10 years, and then expires on January 27th, 2020. Under state law, renewal licenses may be granted for a maximum of up to 10 years. Comcast has submitted a renewal proposal to the town for the renewal license. Now, under state law, once the town receives this proposal, the town gives public notice of the proposal, which the town did, and the town advertises the proposal pursuant to the state law, it's a specific statute, which is the town did. You have to advertise two weeks out, consecutive weeks, for tonight, and then holds a public hearing regarding the proposal. In terms of the substance of the proposal and any cable license, many of the terms are regulated by federal and state law. Not all of it necessarily is open to amendment, but there are some key areas that are important for negotiation with any cable provider, and one of the main areas is funding for amounts for the Public Educational and Government Access Program, or PEG. So, PEG funding is provided to the town via franchise fee based on percentage of the cable provider's gross annual revenues, or GAR, in the town. Under the law, this percentage can be a maximum of 5% of the cable provider's GAR. Under the current license that we have now, the Town of East Bridgewater has now, the franchise fee is 4.5%, so 4.5%. These fees, these franchise fees are paid out to the town on a quarterly basis, based on the revenues of the previous calendar quarter. And they're paid out, these just get paid out throughout the entire tenure license per the... per this proposal and the current license. Under the law, the cable providers are allowed to pass these fees on to their customers, which customers do see on their cable bills each month. Month. The franchise fees usually vary between, somewhere between $4 and $5 per month. Another source of funding for negotiation is also additional capital grant funding and payments for PEG... PEG, I'm sorry, access-related projects. This funding is separate from the PEG franchise fee, which is capped at the 5% of gross annual revenue, so you actually get more money beyond that. The PEG franchise fees are typically used for ongoing operations for PEG access, such as employee salaries, operating, and other expenses related to PEG access programming operations, while capital grant funding is typically used for capital projects related to PEG access programming. Just as the franchise fee, the cable providers are allowed to, by law, to pass the capital grant fees on to the customers as well. So, it's just important to remember that these types of payments are funded by the taxpayers and not by Comcast, basically passed through. They just pass through to the customers on the bill. Under the current license, Comcast has made... made an advance payment of $100,000 in the first year of the license, and then another $100,000 years in the second year of the current license. So, the total of capital grant funding from the current license was $200,000, but under this current license, these advance payments were credited against the quarterly franchise fee payments. However, it's also possible for cable companies to pass this capital grant funding to their customers via separate charges than the PEG fees. The current proposal maintains, that Comcast presented to the town, maintains the same 4.5% of the current license and does not propose any capital grant payments. Most cities and towns are currently trending to the maximum 5% for the franchise fee, as technology is moving so fast. It's unknown whether cable licensing will be obsolete in the next 10 years, as well, there was a recent FCC ruling regarding in-kind contributions which allows cable providers to reduce franchise fee payments by the value of in-kind contributions, such as courtesy cable services to the town. Most towns have a designated PEG access provider, and of course, the town's PEG access provider is here, and that's East Bridgewater Community Access Media, or EB Cam. As the town's PEG access provider, EB Cam provides the... manages the PEG channels, as well as the cable license funds discussed, and decides projects, equipment, et cetera, to expend the funds upon. And Mr. Brown can certainly expand on their role and the funding challenges that they face. In terms of capital grant funding for the license renewal, EB Cam has provided documentations, which I believe Mr. Brown will expand on, as I said, as to what type of future projects they'd be looking at, and the related funding that'd be required for those types of projects. Another area also that communities are pushing for, and I know EB Cam's interested in negotiations with Comcast, is adding HD channels for their PEG local access channels, so those can be offered, so Comcast could offer those in HD format. And, of course, tonight is, as you said, Ms. Chairman, open for public comments on the... on the... on the proposal, and those can certainly be addressed at this hearing. And then, at the end of tonight's hearing, I would recommend the hearing be continued till a later date. So, we would take the comments and everything that's presented in this meeting, go meet with Comcast, and negotiate with them, and come back with a report on that.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Good evening. For the record, I'm Steve Brown, 418 North Central Street.
I feel like I'm listening to the radio.
I have served as the president of the Board of Directors of East Bridgewater Community Television Incorporated, now known as East Bridgewater Community Access Media, since its inception on June 21st, 2000. I hope that you will agree that EB Cam has served as a good fiduciary steward these past two decades. EB Cam board takes very seriously its charge to provide the town with high-quality, local access facilities and programming, and we believe that we have lived up to that expectation. I'd like to take a few minutes to reflect on our accomplishments over the past 10 years, since the current license with Comcast was signed, and then look ahead as best I can at the next 10 years, under the next license, which is currently out for renewal. Now, when the current license was approved back in January of 2010, EB Cam's studio facilities were located in the cramped quarters in the basement of the old East Bridgewater High School. The town was in the planning stages of a new high school, but it was unclear at that time if there would be a home for EB Cam, the new facility. Fortunately, the High School Building Committee had the foresight to see the advantage of having EB Cam located on-site, provided us with the state... the space that we currently occupy in the junior/senior high school. EB Cam Board of Directors carefully utilized the funds provided for pub... for PEG access support to build an entire digital studio, head-end, edit suite, and office space in the new building. We went from one and a half employees to two full-time employees to provide the coverage that was needed and expected by our viewers. Now, in addition to the studio, which was completed in 2013, we set out to build a state-of-the-art mobile video production van in 2014. This vehicle is often seen around town, providing remote coverage of many town events, including the annual Christmas parade, concerts on the common, Veterans Day, Memorial Day observances, high school athletic events, including varsity football, baseball, and softball. In 2016, EB Cam upgraded the audio/video system of this very room from analog to digital to provide high-quality coverage of Board of Selectmen's meetings. This upgrade eliminated the constant calls we used to receive about bad audio and blurry pictures. We also installed a fiber link between Town Hall and our studio to eliminate the degradation of audio/video signal between the two buildings. EB Cam heard from many citizens that in addition to the coverage of the Board of Selectmen and School Committee, they wanted us to provide coverage of the Finance Committee. To that end, we designed and installed an audio/video system in the upstairs conference room, where the FinCom meets, and have been providing coverage of their meetings for the past year or so, year or two. Just this past summer, we added a third full-time employee in order to provide the needed coverage of many events that we record and broadcast. Now, looking ahead to the upcoming 10 years, East Bridgewater Community Access Media looks to build upon its successes over the past two decades by continuing to provide top-quality media facilities for the residents and students of East Bridgewater. To do so requires a strong investment in the design, purchase, and maintenance of our assets. Now, as I mentioned, we built our new studio in 2013, that equipment was purchased new, and will be getting towards the end of its useful life. It's anticipated that equipment will need to be replaced in the next three to five years. Same goes for our van, upgrades to the van's cabling system are needed. Viewers in East Bridgewater have been asking for more coverage of other public hearings and community events. EB Cam has plans to install camera, audio, and recording systems in the two additional Town Hall meeting rooms upstairs. We've also been asked to provide more coverage of presentations and events at the community center at St. Jamarock, as well as the community room at the East Bridgewater Public Library. We plan to design and build a new camera/audio and recording system at the community center, as well as design and build a system over at the library. EB Cam continues to have a strong partnership with the East Bridgewater Public Schools, especially the junior/senior high school, as that is where the EB Cam main studio is located. There's a strong interest on the part of the schools to expand that partnership to some of the younger grades over at the middle school. EB Cam staff would like to travel to the Gordon W. Mitchell School to work with faculty and students there on media projects, and we have a desire to build maybe a satellite studio or edit suite, middle school, to assist with media literacy for the lower grades. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I look forward to EB Cam's continuing service to the town. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Any questions?
No, I just wanna add that, you know, Community Access has been invaluable to EB Hope. On all the coverage we have, getting all that information for, you know, this project has just been fantastic for us, and we look forward to continuing with that in the future.
Yeah, it's a terrific service to the town, your employees are great, you have a good board to work with, and you make us look good, which isn't easy.
We're not looking for miracles.
It's a special filter.
I'm ready for my close-up.
There's special filters on the camera.
Well, I like those filters. I don't have any specific questions, but I'm sure, I think there are other people here who would like to speak. So, I don't know... I don't... we can start over here. If you wanna speak, please raise your hand, and then we can... Did you... okay, and then I'll go to you next, Jim, okay? Come on up.
Hi.
Hi.
I have my notes on my phone, I hope you guys don't mind.
Not at all, if you just tell us your name and your address.
My name is Tori Cameron, and I am a teacher at the Mitchell School, and the STEAM teacher.
Great.
Okay. Well, I actually have been working with EB Cam for a few years now. I have a podcast that I edit through with them, and have recorded many episodes with them, so personally, I absolutely love working with them. But Ann and I have... we've become really great friends and coworkers, and we always bounce ideas off of each other. And since the STEAM lab has opened up, I've come to her with so many big ideas on what I want to provide for our students at the middle school. So, we've done a few things together. We had an episode of the podcast with students on it, and we gave them a voice, and let them talk about STEAM, and how much they enjoyed doing different making and problem-solving and working together collaboratively. It was like one of the best episodes that we've ever done. And I've also worked with Ann for different events. She's come and supported our STEAM night that we just had a couple weeks ago, and it was a huge community night. We had 400 people attend
Great.
from all sorts of different families, and it was just an amazing night, and I'm so glad that she was able to capture all of the activities that we had running. And in the STEAM lab, one of the most popular activities and lessons that I've run in units is working with the green screens. And I have very simple setup. It's the iPads, and we have an awesome app called Do Ink, and the kids are able to transport themselves into all different places with the green screen, so they can make themselves look like... Right now, they're acting as if they were in an earthquake, because we're learning about earthquake safety.
That's awesome.
We've also had the kids do projects using the recording equipment, where they entered, the sixth graders interviewed their teachers and staff members and made kind of like a memory video, because they're moving up to the high school, and Ann's been so helpful through all of that. And in seeing how valuable green screens... And seeing how valuable green screen and video editing and being able to produce something that is valuable, I want to be able to expand the program, and Ann told me that there is opportunity for that with this allotment from Comcast. And so when she told me about the possibility of having the STEAM lab be, have the, like, recording equipment and everything, have there be an EB Cam section of this STEAM lab, of course, I thought that was a great idea. And I would love to be able to provide more for the students and to have more than just the iPads for them to record and to really understand the editing process and to have more larger-scale projects that we can put up on EB Cam and on the different channels that we have. Right now, most of them just go up on my STEAM lab Instagram. And it would be so great if we could have higher quality so that it could actually go on the channels and more families can see them. I've talked with EB Cam about having clubs that run after school for the middle schoolers, because there's such a want and there's such a need, and also having classes run in my class and integrating more of that into the curriculum that I'm already building. And honestly, so many of the kids already have their own YouTube channels, and they already have their little productions that they do at their homes, and I'm not sure what it is that they're producing, but I would love to see it be more educational. And I think in this day and age where kids can just produce whatever they want and they can put it out there, I think it would be really great if we had more of an opportunity to tell them how much of the impact it is for whatever they're producing or making or posting, and having that impact and really talking to them about how important it is to edit and to make sure, like, what you're putting out there in you versus something that will benefit people and be a positive impact. So we would love if you guys could approve this and in the STEAM lab, and it would just benefit so many people, so many families and students.
It sounds like expansions there would be really, a really great thing.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in. I know, Jim, you had your hand up, so, and then I think Beth, did you?
Russ.
What's that?
Russ.
Yep.
Russ after. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jim White in Phillips 41 Leoway. I want to thank Russ and Chris, I mean, Russ and Ann, first of all, for, they do a tremendous job, and what they do for the town, I think, is great, and I'm not here to talk about them or criticize them at all. Comcast is a monopoly, particularly in this town. And I heard, I think it was Chris say, that this is going to be added, and this is going to be added, and we want this, and we want that, and the consumer's going to pay for it. I have next to nothing as far as cable service is concerned. I don't have any movie channels at all. I do have one add-on that I have to get, because I want to watch the Red Sox once in a while, even when they play in Lousy, because it's the best thing on TV. My cable bill a year is $2,000, and that's cheap compared to what most people I've talked to are paying a year. If you add that on to what typical tax bill in this town of $6,000 or $7,000 is, that's a big chunk of money out of somebody's retirement income, somebody's just general income. If someone's raising a family of four kids, three kids, and they're getting a $500 a week grocery bill, you add that on to this, this is really a lot. I just heard the young lady say, "We want this, we want that, we want this." I want a lot of things, too. I talk to my wife and ask her. I don't get them. I really wish that the Board for East Bridgewater Cam and the Board of Selectmen would sit down and hammer out, and I mean hammer out, a negotiation with Comcast. I mean, I know it's like shoveling leaves in October, raking leaves in October. It's not going to happen, but something's got to stop. And if this contract goes through with any kind of an increase at all, our bills are going to go up even more than they go up every year. Comcast goes up faithfully every year. Yeah, you can get it knocked down a little bit if you call and whine and cry about it, but it's not going down anywhere near what it should be. I have 210 channels. I watch 10 of them. And you're the same, you're the same, Rocco, you're the same. Everybody's the same. They pay, they watch 10 or 15 channels, and we're paying to subsidize all of these food channels, what this entertainment channel?
I watch the Food Channel.
Oops.
It's all about the Hallmark channel.
Oh, God, please. And now there's two Hallmark channels.
Merry Christmas to you.
But it really, it's getting excessive, and I really wish you guys would try to hammer out something.
That's what I was saying, we'll be extending contract talks.
Thank you, Jim. I love Beth, and then I think, Russ, you want to talk? Yes?
I defer to anyone else who wants to go.
Okay, come on.
Okay, great. My name is Beth Hayes. I live at 125 St. Chamrock Ave., and I'm pleased to be here to speak in favor of EB Cam. Ginny O'Kelly, who's the chairman of the Anne Hines Memorial Scholarship Committee, and I, I'm also a member, cannot express the gratitude that we feel towards EB Cam. We have events like the gala, which took place last Friday, a bench dedication, lots of other smaller events. With a smile, EB Cam comes, records, and provides audio and video for us. As a 501(c)(3) organization, we wouldn't have funds to do what they do for us. So I know, we're just one small group in town. I know they tape you, and when I was on the school committee, I know they came to tape us. So the work that they do educates everyone in town. I appreciate it. I thank them, and I hope that as, so far as you can, you will support them in what they do.
Thank you. Thanks, Beth. Who else? I see someone in the back, and then, and then I'll go to Ellen, yeah. Hello.
Hi, I'm Ian, 35, Dean Place. I wanted to ask more questions specific to the contract itself. So is, the section in the state law says that they can't ask for more than 10 years? Is it typical?
Right, the maximum, the initial license, whenever, the current license is a renewal, so that's why it's a 10-year. The initial, say Verizon came in here, the initial license, you could get up to 15 years.
Right.
But the renewals, once you're in the renewal phase, which, you know, we are with Comcast, then the maximum length is 10 years.
Does it have to be 10 years?
No, it can be shorter.
That was more what I wanted to ask about, because who knows if whatever the contract is now is going to be pertinent in 10 years from now with the way the technology advances and the way that we're talking about it. It feels like 10 years is a big ask for a monopoly, as we were discussing. I know that this really isn't the place to ask, but has any other company petitioned to move into town? Is that just, that's, sorry?
I just want to correct, if I may, Ms. Chairman. It's to our best advantage because of the changing technology to get as much as we can as fast as we can, because I agree with you, and of course, it's speculation, but 10 years is probably it.
Yeah.
There'll be a new technology. But they're tied in for 10 years.
Okay.
But we can issue another license. So in other words, if Verizon decided tomorrow they wanted to do business in East Bridgewater, the town could still issue another license.
Okay.
So the monopoly that you're referring to right now is created only in the sense that Comcast is the only player.
Sure.
Okay? So it's not that we're granting the monopoly, it's a monopoly in fact, rather than by design.
Okay.
Verizon's not knocking on the door and we're.
Chris might want to correct me.
No, no, I just wanted to, I would just add on to exactly what Mr. Noble said. Verizon is, from talking with other towns, Verizon is recently doing exactly, they're only seeking just five years, because exactly what you're saying, they're saying, hey, we're looking at this changing technology. They think it may be obsolete. They don't want to lock themselves into the 10-year, so they're seeking to, a lot of towns saying, hey, we only want to do a five-year. So just exactly kind of what Mr. Noble said.
And if I may, and use just a second of your time, I wanted to just also change a perception. The town does not dictate what Comcast rate is.
Thank you.
The town would control, and I'll, you know, defer to the actual bill, and you can check me. What's under debate right now, for example, is whether our proposal would be 4.5% or 5%. That effect on the bill would be 46 cents. So while I'm sensitive to the cable cost, the town is nothing really on that 46, you know, just 46 cents. So, you know, I want to make sure that we understand the town isn't collecting $2,000 for providing Comcast cable.
Right. We're not negotiating a contract that's going to raise or lower your price of HBO or internet or any of that.
So I just want to.
Oh, yeah, no, that wasn't my concern.
People understand that, you know, we're not, we're not in a position to tell Comcast what they can charge. We only have a charge on there of 46 cents, so, or additional 46 cents.
You don't have to convince me of that. You know, I'm young with young kids, so.
Major form of entertainment, right?
Right. I was just, you know, and I know it's not really the appropriate place, but my question was more about other competitors moving into town. If Verizon is shopping around for five-year deals with towns, is that something that the town can reach out for separate from this whole discussion?
We did.
And they didn't want any?
And they are not interested.
All right, well, thank you.
Perfectly appropriate question, because I know other people have had that same question.
Sure, thank you.
I think, I said, I'll go with the back. I'm going to try to work forward. So Tim, and then Liz, did you want to?
I'm going to go with Ellen.
Okay. And then we'll go over to you, Mark.
Tim Fowler.
Hi, Tim.
North Central Street. I have actually been on the Board of Directors for EB Cam since its inception. It makes me feel old, like 2000. Didn't realize that I've given that time. In that time, we've gone, talk about technology increasing. We had VHS tapes.
Yeah.
We had reel-to-reel tapes. And I think they were, what we inherited for equipment was held together with wishes, bubble gum, and string, in all honesty. We are now video streaming.
Yep.
So you go on your computer, you go on your phone, you can watch any of the meetings. You can watch any of the events that Zach and Russ and Ann and all the senior volunteers, specifically, had put in time, sweat, tears, and effort. It is truly a community effort, and with the advent of technology, we're moving towards HD, and we're doing closed caption per the request of a lot of people that are watching these meetings, Selectmen's meetings, the School Committee, because, yeah, we have had technical issues over the time, you know. You hello? You can't hear?
Don't touch the mic.
Well, I'm not going to. Please.
Zach?
All me.
Zach will kill you if you touch the mic.
Zach, I'm sorry.
All right, he'll hurt you.
Wow. Where did Tim go? I don't know. But in all, in all seriousness, 10 years seems like a lot of time to people, you know. Verizon, Verizon doesn't want to be here. Comcast is here. We're getting and using as much as we can. We're advancing as much as we can, and we're being as receptive as we can from the town and from technology that allows us. We're actually ahead of the curve. If you were to compare us to other cable studios in the area, we're far ahead of them. And it's the blood, sweat, and tears, and it's the dedication of everyone involved, and it's not just the board and our employees, it's the town giving back and helping us and supporting us, and that's what we're looking for. Thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Ellen, did you want to?
Sure.
This will be the one and only time you ever see me ad-lib speaking. Just like to point that out. Oh, I touched the mics.
Don't touch the mic.
I have a habit of.
We're trying to negotiate a contract. Don't touch the mic again.
I'll try not to break it. I would like to point out that, I'm going to reiterate, whose phone? Somebody's phone went off. I would like to point out that I feel the same way that everyone else has been talking about Ann and Russ and Zach with EB Cam and all of the volunteers. They have many volunteers that help them, and they also have a media club that they have with the kids, and they take these kids that want to be in the media club, and they take them under their wing, and they show them how to use the cameras. And it's good, because some of the kids are not band kids, they're not sports kids. They want something, so they join the media club. And I think it's good for the kids, and some of these kids might go off and maybe work for a radio station or a TV station someday. Who knows? You never know. And they're faithfully at our school committee meetings, and then when the school committee meeting is finally over, they come in, sometimes they're lengthy, they come in and they're shutting everything down, and they're there faithfully every single time. And they do a great job, and they always have a smile on their face. They're always pleasant, they're easily accessible, and they go above and beyond.
Thank you.
I just wanted just to reiterate that thanks, you know, they get out the information that the town and that the district needs to get out to those who cannot participate at a meeting or get out of their house to come to a meeting, and they can turn this on, and just like NPR, you hear news that you might not hear all the time, or information that you don't get on a, you might get national news, but, you know, just town news, it's nice to hear. And they are, they're always there. There's never a time that we haven't asked, that we have asked them to help us do something or support the kids in some way that they have not done that. So for the school district's point of view, and, you know, on behalf of the district along with Ellen, you know, we thank them for all that they have done, and we continue to support them, and especially like Tori Cameron said this evening, they were there for our STEAM night, you know, so that people could see what we are doing at the schools on an educational level, not just at school committee meetings. And at the sports events or wherever they are located, they always do a nice program and get kids involved, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Mark Lindy, and I am here as the immediate past president on behalf of the Rotary Club of the Bridgewater's, all three of them. Recently, EB Cam came and recorded our Citizen of the Year program.
Dave's Big Night.
Which Dave won the award for East Bridgewater, and they do that every year. Anything the Rotary Club asks of EB Cam, they're available. We actually have three towns that kind of fight over coverage, because they're all good at what they do, but the passion over here in East Bridgewater and the caring and the work with the kids and everything is second to none. I happen to run the Brockton cable stations, and I'm now a resident of.
Long time.
Bridgewater. I'm only down the street, but it's too bad we can't get all the channels in all the towns. But I watch what Russ and Ann and Zach do, and I think you're very lucky here in town. So I have the same type of job, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here because these folks care. I saw the original studio back in the day. I worked in Holbrook. My intern came to East Bridgewater to work in the studio after he was my intern from Fitchburg State, and I've just seen the metamorphosis from infancy to full-blown, just wonderful community coverage and caring. So I just came here on behalf of the Rotary Club.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Russ? I don't think, did anybody else, no, nope. Susan? Okay. Russ, do you want to go last? Is that what you're telling me? I don't know if that's a good idea.
Hi, Susan Gilpatrick, Town Clerk, 18 McCray Drive, East Bridgewater. I just wanted to basically reiterate what other people have been saying. Russ, Ian, and Zach, as far as our election coverage, do an awesome job. They're there at the end of every election. They're out there taking, you know, we have to go out and read all the results. They're out there, and they're waiting for us and give us the time that we need to get the election results out there. And they can get a post on the cable quicker than I can get it tallied and back up to Town Hall to put unofficial results out. So they're a big plus to us, a big help to us there. I just can't say enough how easy they are to work with, and we appreciate what they do.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who was up over here? Tom? Anybody else on that side? No? Okay. You're it.
Hi, Tom Garrigan, 45 Deer Run Drive. So I just wanted to just go back a little bit in history. In 2003, I joined EB, East Bridgewater Community Television at the time, because Tim Fowler talked me into it. But it was great, because it was a really good opportunity for me to use my engineering skills to sort of help the studio grow. And we were held together with Band-Aids then, and we had a portable air conditioner that we stuck in the window to try to keep the studio at half a reasonable level that we could work in. It was, it was pretty, it was pretty bad. When we built the new studio. When we built the new studio, I was also on the Cable Advisory Board for the last license in 2010. And one of the things we pushed for was the capital upfront, a couple hundred thousand dollars. It was a hundred thousand dollars year one, I think, a hundred thousand dollars year two. And we did that because we had to outlay almost all of that to equip the studio in the new home. One of the things we did when we built the studio was we wired it and we built it for high definition. And even though high definition wasn't a real big thing in 2003, we, we needed, actually 2013, I'm sorry, it was sort of coming into its fruition, but we built it that way. Currently, I am no longer on the Board of Directors, I had other things that I needed to do, so last year I stepped down. But currently, everything that we record and edit and publish online is all high definition. The only thing that's not is Comcast. So we had to put in sort of special equipment to downgrade our signal to standard definition to be able to then broadcast it to the town via Comcast, because that is all that Comcast was willing to give us back in 2010. I feel that we should, as a town, demand high-definition channels for public access, at least one, but I would push for two or three. The technology is there for Comcast, the fiber connection, we paid the last time for Comcast, it's all there. It's just replacement of a few small devices, and now at your house, you'll be able to watch high-definition local access programming. And I know, I think in the current contract or negotiation, I'm not positive, but I know you're asking for at least one hi-def channel.
It's on the table, yeah.
So that's something that I would totally push for. Just a little bit of history, when we were negotiating in the last contract in 2010, the prior contract when they first started, nobody really, the town didn't know what they needed to do, and it was a first-time thing, and so I think we got 1.97 percent. So less than 2 percent. And that was barely enough to pay for the salary of the director. So we had a third and a third and a third system, where the town would pay a third, the school would pay a third, and then EB Cam, or East Bridgewater Community Television, would pay a third. One of the things that we demanded, they wanted to give us, I think, 3 percent in 2010. We pushed hard, we actually told the Board of Selectmen, I don't know, I think, David, I don't know if you were on then, but we told the Board of Selectmen to do not accept Comcast's offer, let it expire. And we played hardball, Comcast came back and said, okay, we'll give you 4.5 percent. So it's there for the taking, I think we should get as much as we possibly can. You're right, it's only four or five dollars a month, it's for the average subscriber, and it might go up 50 cents. It's not a ton of money, but you get a ton of programming and a ton of benefit that the town actually does take advantage of. Thank you.
Will that HD channel make us look better? That's what I-
Actually, no. No, I'm kidding.
It should probably be more than like five dollars a month.
Ask any TV person, and they'll tell you, that's the worst thing that's ever happened to news personalities, is-
Okay, scrap that HD.
No, 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 the background would look better, too.
Do we have a makeup problem?
You may have to actually have makeup, but, but no, it's the technology of the future. And actually, like I said, if you go onto the website and you download the streaming content, that's hi-def. So you're actually seeing, and if you put Channel 9 on standard definition versus Channel 9 on high definition next to each other, it would be night and day. And obviously, anybody that has hi-def now, which probably 90 percent of the townspeople do, you'll definitely see the difference.
Okay, thank you.
All right?
Thanks, Tom. Anybody else before I call on our last commentator?
Sorry, we're out of time.
Sorry, Russ. This concludes the hearing. Russ, why don't you come on up to the table?
I promise I'll make this short.
I've heard that from you before.
Yeah.
Ann, are you coming? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you wanted to talk to me.
Zach's pushing the button, see if he up there.
I'm not gonna touch the mic, Zach, I promise.
Don't touch the mic.
Okay. Russ Hannigan, 349 North Bedford Street, East Perdora, Mass. At the end of this month, I'll be moving yet again within East Bridgewater, but this time with my fiancee, so.
Congratulations.
Looking forward to that.
Congratulations.
For those who don't know who I am, Russ Hannigan, Executive Director, East Perdora Community Access Media. I've worked in public access television for close to 30 years now. Prior to that, I worked in commercial television, various stations, and prior to that, with the Armed Forces Television Network as a member of the US Army. Went to college at Boston University, Go Terriers, School of Public Communications, four-year degree in broadcasting and film. I worked at EB Cam, I've worked at EB Cam now for over 16 years, and as other folks have said, we've transitioned as a facility from two channels and one employee and five members to a facility now of three full channels, what's called a PEG system, Public Educational Government Access. We now have close to 250 community members involved, not including our senior citizens and our high school and 7th and 8th graders who also participate. Besides being a staff member at EB Cam, I'm also resident of the community who produces his own public access TV show, trying to get it on a monthly basis. It's like herding cats to get my other co-hosts together. I know how important public access television is to the community, because I'm also a Comcast subscriber. And for the additional 46 cents on the bill, I'm willing to pay that to see it upgraded on HD and to get more programming on the air and to get more people participating and involved. In the history, as was mentioned, we changed from East Perdora Community Television to East Perdora Community Access Media to better reflect our growing role in the community and our growing abilities in the community. We have a full-time Assistant Director in charge of our education access channel and a full-time government access coordinator. We, I'm sorry if I'm a little nervous. My role as Executive Director includes, but is not limited to, helping with the public access channel and helping public access producers create their own programming. I also act as one of the club advisors to the East Perdora High School Multimedia Club. We're training the future broadcasters, the future cable casters, and the media savvy students who are gonna go out there and do great careers. I can't emphasize enough the importance of these three channels, the staff, to the community. When I first arrived three years ago, and, excuse me, 16 years ago in East Bridgewater, East Bridgewater had three separate newspapers. The Brockton Enterprise and two local newspapers. In those 16 years, it's whittled down, we've lost two of our major newspapers, and the Brockton Enterprise simply became known as the Enterprise. It's regrettable that the coverage has also dropped off in the Enterprise itself, but that's due to shrinking staff members and newspaper customer patronage. Being EB Cam, we're hyper-local. We tend to cover a lot of the things that the other media sadly can't or won't do. You'll see Boston news trucks in here, but unfortunately, when they come to East Bridgewater, they're only here for bad news. We're here with our truck and our members to cover the good stuff that happens in the community, football games, parades, high school graduations, all sorts of ceremonies, and a plethora of musical performances. If you ask any resident why they have cable television, more times you'll hear it's to see the government meetings, the town meetings, the events that only EB Cam is there to cover. And continued financial support of the facility is imperative, necessary, and I think will be demanded by the residents when our license comes to fruition. EB Cam continues to grow, thrive, and expand, and with proper funding, we will continue to do all three. We're looking to expand public access facilities with upgrades to our current field and studio equipment. As you're aware, the media environment is constantly changing, and the technology is often outdated by the very day the equipment arrives. EB Cam needs to stay funded so that we can keep our residents, our senior citizens, and our students working with the most up-to-date and most cutting-edge technology. I know that my coworkers, Ann and Zach, will probably expand on these things, so I don't want to be repetitious, and at this point, I'm gonna hand it off to Ann.
Great, thanks, Russ.
Well, my name is Ann Carrigan, and I know a lot of you know me. I've worked at EB Cam for over 12 years, and I began as a part-time production assistant. And when our first Comcast renewal took place, they were able to hire me in a full-time capacity. Now it is time for renewal once again, and I find myself as the Assistant Director of a thriving access facility that is a vital part of East Bridgewater's community. The changes that have occurred over the last decade in our studio are tremendous. We now have another full-time employee who is our government access coordinator, tripling our ability to serve the community. We've been able to expand our coverage of government meetings, moving from only carrying the Board of Selectmen's Meeting to coverage of finance committee and capital planning meetings. Upgrades of equipment in both the first and second floor conference rooms improved our broadcast capabilities, along with live streaming of said meetings to the community. A rebranding from EBC TV to EB Cam, an updated website with live streaming and video on demand, and a fresh new office in the beautiful new high school gave us renewed vigor and the space to increase our video production. Our presence not only in the Town Hall, but also in the schools is vitally important. The list of events we cover throughout the three schools is far too long to list here, but suffice to say that there is seldom a week that goes by that does not find EB Cam covering multiple school events, be it music, sports, or academic in nature. We are there for all of it, from the very first day of school, when they step off the buses at the high school, to the last bus on the last day, waving goodbye to their teachers at Central School. We are there to capture it all. EB Cam offers an after-school multimedia club to the students in grades 7 through 12, where we show the kids how to run cameras, direct and produce shows, and edit. The club has a video game show called Play On, which is recorded once a month. It is completely student-run, from the planning stages straight through all phases of video production and editing, with minimal supervision by myself. The kids do an amazing job, and I am very proud of what they have accomplished. By putting the responsibility in the students' hands, we empower them, which makes them thrive and strive to do their best work each month. With the new Comcast renewal, my future hope slash goal is to expand our presence into the Gordon W. Mitchell School. I believe that if we can establish a satellite studio there, we could collaborate with the flourishing STEAM lab run by Mrs. Cameron, who spoke earlier, and increase the learning experience by including video production. This is yet another form of community outreach which benefits both EB Cam and the children of our town. Please continue to fund our studio at the highest possible level. The staff of EB Cam, myself, Russ, and Zach Anderson are 100% dedicated to East Bridgewater. The residents of this town have seen one or all of us at almost all local events, capturing memories of their children, keeping residents informed, and reminding everyone that East Bridgewater is a great place to live and raise a family. Thank you, and I hope they will continue.
Thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Russ.
I did sort of lie, saying I was gonna be the last person. Zach would like to speak.
Nope.
He's changed his mind, okay.
We'll let you touch the-
All right, well, thank you both very much. Well, I just want to thank everybody for coming to the hearing and sharing your praise and your appreciation for what they do at EB Cam. I know for us, as members of the Board of Selectmen, it's an invaluable service so that people can see our meetings, whether it's live or, you know, taped, and we have a record of it, too. I will say, I don't go back and watch them. But it's great that it's available, and again, thank you all for coming and sharing your thoughts on this. We will continue this and continue negotiations. Do we need a motion for that, or we?
We're gonna continue the hearing.
Right. Okay, so we will continue the hearing and-
And we'll notify you when-
Work with Town Council and with the board. So, great, thank you.
Again, we appreciate everyone, everyone here that supports this. No one supports it more than the board. And I've got negotiations, and Mr. Noble and Chris, they're on top of it. They will fight to the end to make sure that we get everything that we can possibly get out of Comcast.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. We have action items.
Why don't you hit the gavel?
Should I hit the gavel to clear the room?
Oh, they're outstanding, what are you talking about?
No, no, see, this is like town meeting, you get the vote they want.
What's this? It's a $10 fee if you leave early.
Wow, there goes our Nielsen ratings, right down.
All right, moving on.
Yes. Where does he think he's going?
Action items.
You're my ride.
They're gonna watch it at all.
Yeah. All right, action items.
Adam Shear, motion to instruct the Animal Control Officer Lisa McKay to issue non-criminal violations to dog owners who have not licensed their dogs as of Tuesday, November 5, 2019.
Second, any discussion?
Could I just ask the Town Clerk, how many outstanding licenses do we have at this time?
As of today, we have 142 unlicensed dogs and 114 owners. So obviously, some of those owners are homeless.
142 unlicensed dogs and how many owners?
114.
Okay. So it's gone down quite a bit.
Oh, yeah.
Not enough.
No, 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 but since we originally talked about it, it has gone down.
We have over, probably over $2,400 dogs in town.
Okay.
Still making an effort, I don't really want to take this to court.
No. Hopefully, this will be the-
So, we're gonna work real hard to bring that number down, but we have issued the non-criminal violations at that point.
If we get a bump in the people who come in and pay, it should be much lower against town, but we have to take them forward.
Okay, good. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Adam Shear, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 25, 2019, 9:00 AM Board of Selectmen's Meeting.
Second, any discussion?
No, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye. Adam Shear, I make a motion to approve but not release the minutes of the October 25, 2019, 9:17 AM Executive Session Meeting.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is it for action items. We have a town administrator report, Mr. Noble.
It's been an exciting week, so culminating today at a visit from, I went up to the Fire Academy and participated in a panel review for the graduating leaders, which would be the future chiefs. So I appreciate the opportunity that was extended to me to participate in that. I think I've covered everything. Tim came forward with the issues on the electrical, the superintendent came through with the issues that we've been dealing with, with the issue with the high school, so I think you're up to date.
Okay.
And I have nothing much else to give you.
Okay.
Thank you for keeping it brief.
Yeah, right. Rebecca, do we have announcements or reports?
No big announcements. At the next Selectmen's Meeting on the 18th, we do have the public hearing for the Round Fields Grant at 4 o'clock.
Okay.
And then the regular meeting will take place at 6:30.
All right, board discussions. We want to talk about the East Bridgewater Youth Soccer Association request to install field lighting at the Belmont Street Soccer Complex.
Good evening.
Much love. You've had a long time to get to this point.
That's all right. I'm Trista Higgins, I'm representing East Bridgewater Youth Soccer. I am on the board, and at our complex, we are hoping to install field lighting. The, do you have a copy of the proposal?
Yes.
Okay. So this was in our original plan, when the structure was built, the structure being the snack bar. And we have seven fields, but we're looking to light just the fields immediately behind the snack bar. We have the fixtures, the light poles are actually the ones that were donated from the old high school, the old field. We've had them looked at by engineers, and we need to update the actual light fixtures, so we know that. We've had the footings designed and determined what they need to be, also by engineers, and all of that, if you don't have it, it's upstairs with the planning board. So we're just looking to improve the field usage. It would not be, those lights would not be on constantly, they would not- It would not be, those lights would not be on constantly, they would not be on frequently. It's mostly to extend our hours with early daylight. We have, on any given weeknight, you know, and it varies based on what night's coach wants their, coaches want their teams to practice, but we have multiple teams practicing and as daylight, or daylight goes away quicker, practices get shorter and shorter. So we, we're just looking to extend field usage and it's an improvement to the complex. And over the years, the organization has really put a lot of money back into this town property. We've irrigated all of our fields, we maintain the fields. It's a phenomenal complex that's supported by a lot of work of very few volunteers. We're not looking for any town funding. We have the funding, we've been, you know, putting that aside with the profits that we've been raising over the years, so we're not looking for town funding, we're just looking for approval to go ahead with the project.
Great. Mr. Sheed, do you have some history with all of this?
I do. Out of the seven fields, how many are you planning on lighting?
The ones immediately behind the snack bar.
Is that three of them?
We put them into three smaller fields, but we can change up the size if we need to, we typically don't. That's where the younger kids typically practice, they're not our big 11V11 fields.
And what time do you anticipate shutting these lights off?
We have our proposal in line with Strong's Field and Church Street, so I believe the town curfew, I believe in the proposal, it's 10.
Right.
So it's in line with all of the other fields that are lit.
Great.
And again, it wouldn't be a nightly occurrence, it would be based on need. And to be honest, there's not a whole lot of activity at the soccer field. I've been on the Board for many years now, there's not a whole lot of evening activity in the way of games. All of our competitive games are during the, the day on Saturdays in the fall for rec soccer. And then in the spring, we do have our South Shore Travel League games there if we're the home team and we do sometimes rent field space out to club teams. But again, those gate, that gameplay is during, during the day and at best, early evening, so it's not going to be frequent, constant games. We're not looking to expand our game schedule or anything such as that, just make the fields more accessible with early, early dark fall.
Would you, on the rentals from the club teams and stuff like that, if they came to you and they wanted night games here, what position would you be taking on those?
Well, club teams are now moving to playing on turf, so we are not sought out at all because we're all grass fields and we don't, you know, we don't have smooth field playing surfaces per se, so I don't say that that would be an option. I can't say definitely because they haven't approached us and right now, within the last year-
It's because they don't think you have lights.
But, but the fields that will be lit won't be able, won't be available for club access because they're not 11V11 fields.
Okay.
So competitive play happens on the backfields.
Right, okay.
Anything else?
I know we have to look into parking, we have to look at upgrading the roads, lighting going both in and out.
The east, yeah, that is something that we've also had the engineers come in and look at and we know that has to be coincident with the lighting of right behind the snack bar.
Okay.
Anything?
So I think also maybe informing the Butters by, just simply a postcard that we entertain this proposal and then we look at the whole project in addition to lighting. There's no Planning Board approval required, it's just a Building Department, like, you know, and because there are 501(c)(3) and because it's a town field, it'd be up to the Board of Selectmen to decide whether they wish to waive the building fee.
Okay.
So those are two issues that we'd want to address and then I think at the same time, we look at the access road, the parking lot, et cetera, so do this all at the same time.
Okay.
Anything else?
How long has the plan been upstairs in front of the Planning Board? I know they just reviewed.
How long has it been upstairs?
Is this an updated one or is this one that I looked at?
This is probably-
10, 10 years ago.
I don't know that it was 10 years ago. They called me in to get it done.
Ah, see?
Is it on yellow paper?
No, I believe there's been updates since, since that time. We started to pursue this again maybe four or five years ago and then the process kind of stuttered again.
Okay.
So-
I met with Mr. Gurney a bunch of times.
Okay, yeah, yeah, he had been intricately involved.
Okay, have we updated up since then?
I can't say definitively, to be honest with you, but I can certainly find out when it's helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you, Trista.
Again, take everything into consideration, Tricia.
Okay.
Go forward with this as it allows.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, have a good night.